Dr. Avery and Dr. Chuck Appella are glad to announce the opening of Central Georgia Primary Care right next to Paul's Tire at 230 Industrial Boulevard. At Central Georgia Primary Care, we offer highly skilled physicians with compassionate, personalized care focused on each individual patient as our top priority every single day. Our physicians have devoted a lifetime of excellence in health care. It's Central Georgia Primary Care bringing state-of-the-art health care right here at home.
The ratings went up. You're welcome.
The City Council meeting for the City of Dublin from February 3rd, 2022 is hereby called a quarter. I'd ask the Reverend Elgin Dixon to provide the invocation.
Let us bow. Our God, our Father, we thank you for this day, a beautiful day that you have given unto us, we the citizens of Dublin, Georgia. We thank you for these, our leaders, that serve us. We ask God that you would give them the wisdom, that you would guide their minds, guide their thoughts, help them to lead us to higher heights and to deeper depths. And let everything that they do be pleasing in your sight. In your Son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone for being here and thank Reverend Dixon for providing an indication for us tonight. We'll begin with the first agenda item, the approval of the January 20th, 2022 council meeting minutes and the meeting minutes from the January 28th, 2022 special call council meeting minutes. Let the motion for approval. So we have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The second item is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
You had a copy of those bills in your package.
You play the beans.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Smith to approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Name? The ayes have it. Third item is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
Yes, we have one purchase. It's a police heat vehicle. This is to replace one that was involved in an accident last year. Some of you may remember seeing about a police officer involved in an accident on Hillcrest. He was struck by someone driving along Hillcrest. The vehicle was totaled out. We took bids to replace it. We received two bids. One was from Ford Cresview at $59,843 and the other was from OC Welch Ford Lincoln in the amount of $52,718.26. The insurance proceeds for this to replace the vehicle were $52,663 and that will be used to go towards this purchase. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase and award it will be at the OC Welch Ford Lincoln.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the bill by OC Welch Ford Lincoln.
Can I have a question? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. What's the timeframe for these vehicles?
I think it's going to be delivered by July 20th, July.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. We don't have to have a roll call on this. All right, so all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The fourth item on our agenda tonight is a presentation by Greg Chapman and Nichols Colley Associates of the FY 2021 Annual Conference of Financial Report. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for being here.
Thank you all for having me. A lot of you are new, so I'm just going to introduce myself. I am Greg Chapman. I'm a partner with Nichols Colley and Associates here in Dublin. We are a public accounting firm and we have eight offices across Georgia, about 220 people right now. So we're, even though we're here in Dublin, we are a pretty decent-sized firm. Just to also say that we also, you know, we serve a lot of government entities right now, about 75 governments throughout the state, from the third-largest county in the state to, I serve a city with 300 citizens. So we serve all sizes of governments throughout the state. Flipping through the handout, you guys, I'm just going to go through some of the required communications I have to give you and then we'll look at a few financial numbers. But our responsibility as your auditors is to review the financial statements that are provided by Blake and his department and to render an opinion on whether those financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We do provide reasonable assurance. It is impossible for us to look at every transaction the city does, so we do testing and perform procedures to review those transactions on a sampling basis. We do look at the internal control structure of the city in order to render our opinion on those financial statements, but we don't render an opinion on the internal controls themselves. And the financial statements are the responsibility of management. Our job is to audit those financial statements, so as a part of our audit, you know, Blake reviews all of the financials, signs off on them, and then before we release everything. Next page, our opinion. This is what, you know, ultimately what you're paying me for, is to render an opinion. So our opinion is an unmodified opinion and that's governmental or accounting speak for a clean opinion, so an unmodified opinion is a good opinion. And that means that those are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. And we also, this year, some years we do have this. This year we did, thanks to the CARES Act, if you have expenditures of federal grant money over $750,000, then we have to do testing on federal awards and render an opinion on those federal awards, on the ones that are major. So this year, the one major program we had was the CARES Act and we tested, did testing on that. Very easy testing based on how they set that ground up, so no problem with that. We rendered an unmodified opinion on the federal awards as well. As part of our audit, we have to review the city's policies, how they account for various transactions such as estimates and the disclosures in the financials. The policies are how the city accounts for everything. That's all in one of your financial statements. And then as far as estimates, you know, in your financials, there are hard numbers such as cash. I can easily go to Morris Bank or any other bank that you have and say how much is in the account and then do testing that way. But then there are other estimates such as your pension plan, retirement benefits that are estimates by actuaries. So we review the inputs of those calculations to determine whether those are reasonable and we had no problems with those estimates. Next page, our relationship with management. We did receive full cooperation from management staff. It's not just Blake and his department. We have to talk with them to the police department, the fire department about grants, controls, that kind of thing. So any time we ask for assistance, we do receive that from the staff at the city. No disagreements with management on any accounting issues or financial reporting matters. As part of the audit, there are audit adjustments and what that clearly means is between the time that we get the trial ballots from Blake and the time we finish, there are adjustments. Some of those are presented by Blake for information that comes in after that point. Some of them are presented by us, some of them are due to the actuaries. Those take very long time to present, so usually we get those numbers after we get the trial ballots, but we do have general entries throughout the audit and those are available. Blake has those. Pass adjustments. That's where, if there was a situation where, you know, the firm recommended an entry and Blake decided not to make that entry, he doesn't have to make every entry and every entry that we propose wouldn't render our opinion wrong, but, you know, that didn't exist in this situation. Any adjustments that were proposed were accepted by management, so no pass adjustments. As a part of the city's audit or any audit of financial statements, we do request for management written representations and that purely says, we gave you what you've asked for and we responded truthfully. And we did receive that letter from management. Auditor independence. I am, as far as the engagement team are required to be independent as relation to the city. I don't have any kind of, you know, major transactions with me personally or with the firm between the city and the firm or me, other than the audit. We don't perform any management advisory services, find it independent, parent independence. And what that means is I can't come in and provide services to the city that tells you how to account for something and then turn around and audit that. So we don't perform those type of services, so we are independent. The next page, I included a few for council, a few financial trend slides for you to review. The first slide is the major tax performance. The top line are your property taxes and the second line is your sales taxes, local option sales taxes recorded in the general fund. Healthy, you know, no sharp ups or downs in those lines as a steady increase over time as, you know, sales go up and property tax values change. So nothing alarming there, just a steady climb on that. Next page, our financial trends. For the general fund, no surprise, the majority of the city's expenditure related to public safety, that's what you expected it to be for. 57% for last year. That's a line what we see with other cities and counties, most, you know, the majority of 50 to 60% usually runs for public safety, so that's a normal breakdown. Next slide is general fund balance. This is the, you know, the net equity of the general fund at the end of the year. It's not necessarily unrestricted fund balance, it's the total fund balance, so this could include amounts that are restricted for certain uses, so there was an increase there during '21. I think most of that is probably due to CARES Act money coming in to supplement those public safety salaries and for other reasons, but a little bit of an increase there. As far as fund balance, the GFOA, which is the Governmental Financial Officers Association, recommends keeping 60 days of fund balance in the general fund. I believe my calculation was right at three months of fund balance and that gives you some reserve to operate for the coming year for revenues were to fall short, if there were to be some natural disaster, gives you some resources to take care of those situations. So a healthy fund balance for the city. The next slide just points out some of the capital investments that the city made during '21. No surprise, T-Swots, $6.8 million spent on mostly Hillcrest Parkway as everyone sees on their daily drive and also some of the roads in Stubbs Park has started happening this year, some of that activity in the T-Swot funds. In the other Swots funds, one point, just over a million dollars on purchases and lease payments, mostly due to equipment for public safety, public works, and the water and gas And then finally, in the enterprise funds themselves, there was another $1.8 million spent on equipment and infrastructure, water pipes, gas pipes, anything other than what was purchased out of Swots. So a lot of investment in the city during the year, a lot of that coming from T-Swots, which is coming from a regional fund, was not necessarily coming out of the city's pockets on that. That's a good thing for sure. And then the last two slides are the unrestricted net position of the enterprise funds. Most of those are holding steady over the last five years. The gas one has tapered down somewhat over the last few years, but still a healthy reserve in those funds, each of those. There's not really a hard and fast recommendation on how much you keep in those. General, it's somewhere between 100 and 20 to 150 days of reserve. That gets you through, again, natural disasters like sanitation or if you, you know, some other local cities have seen infrastructure problems with their water system or pipes bursting, so it gets you through those types of situations that have to go borrow money for that. So good, not fund balance, but net position, which is the same as that for the enterprise ones. And that's all I have for the audit. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anything in your audit that gave cause for concern that you should, you think might be helpful to relate to us as a council?
No, sir. You know, like I said, we received full cooperation. Blake does a good job of keeping, you know, as there have been recommendations over the years, he's implemented those and then made those adjustments, but definitely no issues with the audit or with the internal control structure or anything in those regards.
Any questions from council? Well, thank you for the presentation. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Daniels, for keeping our books in order.
I am one of the part owners here and the general manager here at the Hampton Inn and Suites. First time when I got introduced to Morris Bank, the people were so friendly and helpful. You feel like that you are appreciated there. At Morris Bank, everybody down at the bank is so friendly and not just to myself, they're just friendly to everybody. They want us to succeed because our success is their success at the same time. That makes a lot of difference and they're always there for us.
We'll now move to item number five on the agenda, the second reading and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY 22 budget. Mr. Powell.
Speaking of keeping our books in order, this is ordinance number 2205, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to amend the budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 to provide for an effective date and for other purposes.
We will now close the city council meeting, open a public hearing on this ordinance and invite anyone who wants to speak in favor of the ordinance to come forward. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the ordinance? If there's no one to speak in favor of the ordinance, is there anyone who would wish to come forward to speak against the ordinance? If there are no public comments, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the city council meeting, and turn this matter over to council for action.
Move to approval.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Mascara. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right. We'll now move on to item number six, which is discussion and action on the proposed budget report and fee schedule report from the Recreation Authority regarding the water park. Mr. Coats.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you for having me, ma'am. Statement of name for the rookie is Curtis Coats, the third program director for the Dublin-Morris County Recreation Authority.
Jennifer Crossland, J.J. Crossland, and I am with Aquatics and Concessions.
All right. Last year, we presented the budget, $252,899 and this year, we will be presenting council with budget estimated of $302,378. There is an increase because the days are moving up and also the hours, which we will be operating up under at the water park, will be moving up as well.
What are the hours?
All right. There were originally intended seats, but on Fridays and Saturdays, you know, Sundays, we're extending that for two more hours because it doesn't get dark until 8:00 PM or a little bit after that, so we're going to try to get as much additional funds as we can to come to the water park.
All right, thanks.
Additional days. We've opened early.
No, actually, we're opening at the same time, it's like that weekend, but school usually lets back in the first day in August, maybe the second, but this year, they're going back around the ninth or the 10th, so we're going to try to extend it out that full.
How many total days are y'all looking at approximately?
Eighty-three.
Any change to the cost?
For the season passes, yes. Season passes and family passes, the cost did go up for family from $150 to $175. The original price for, for a single season pass was $50 and then, $55, $50 and then that did go up an additional $50.
I'll say my family's always gotten a family pass and it's the best deal in recreation.
Yes, thank you. And also, we did make some slight improvements to try to enhance the park. I usually do like certain programs called Theme Week and what I've noticed is that the old PA systems that we had at the water park did not reach the entire park, so I did reach out and receive a check in the amount of $4200 from Community Banking, they're going to sponsor the PA systems to go around the whole park, so.
Are you looking at just, I know you opened more, more that we're getting.
Yes, sir.
A lot of schools around first in May, after we got some tests and they be looking for, looking at the line of splash pad, be able for them to come in and use splash pad for getting them extra income going that time just for the splash pad, not the whole park.
No, okay.
Just splash pad. It's like they know, I know it used to be, splash pad used to be open for them to come and use it. That's where it generated income for them, not, I know they need lifeguard, but splash pad.
Yes, sir. We can actually look into that.
And of course, what are, what are some things we're doing to compete with water parks for our states where we want to run?
I did reach out to a group called the Aquatic Development Group. They actually installed a ride, a couple of rides down in Statesburg called the Flow Rider and Southern Pines Water Park is looking to install that. We're just basically waiting, we're at the mercy of that, you know, particular company that builds those rides to get back in contact with us.
Curtis, you mentioned, you know, family passes and season passes and so forth. When do those go on sale?
They're actually going to sell beginning in March.
Beginning in March and there's not going to be a limitation or an end date?
Actually, I will have to, I will bring it up in the recommendation of the staff meeting.
I would recommend that we not have a close date on that. Families who want to pay $175 the day they come, the day they come there on Memorial Day, let them do it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? And just for the benefit of the public, there's an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Dublin and the Recreation Authority that where the Rec Authority agreed to bring their budget to city council and answer questions about it, and it does require a vote of city council to approve that budget. We appreciate you coming today and answering all our questions and coming to pre-council and answering all our questions there as well, and I think you've done a great job presenting this information and appreciate that.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Did you ever run into any issues with capacity? Have it turned people away?
No.
Not yet?
Not, well, no, the first year we ran into a lot.
Well, I know the last year.
Yeah, the last year, no, sir, we have not run into issue with capacity.
Okay, but the first year you did?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, well, we're looking forward to a great year. Do we have a motion to approve the Rec Authority budget?
Make the motion, sir.
We have a, we have a motion from Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Jones. Any further discussion? I think we have to have a roll call on this, is that correct? It says, okay. All those in favor of approving the budget, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Coats.
Thank you.
This moment in Black history brought to you by Dublin Ford. Today, we honor Warren McClendon Jr. He was born in Lawrence County on November 27th, 1931. Mr. Warren McClendon married Opal Dean Brantley and lived together as husband and wife for 49 years and 11 months before his death. They raised four children and 10 grandchildren. He was famously known as the first black deputy sheriff of Lawrence County in 1961. He served Lawrence County extremely well as a public servant. He served as a deputy, sergeant, and investigator from 1961 until 80. He was the Black Festival Man of the Year in 1982, honorary state trooper, and served as a lieutenant colonel on the staff of Governor Jimmy Carter. He was a charter member of the Optimist Club, member of the Eighth Congressional District Advisory Council, had commendations from Governor Joe Frank Harris and Governor Jimmy Carter. Mr. Warren McClendon Jr. mentored many men in our community, including Harold McClendon, Elgin Dixon, Warren Lee, and Spencer Moore. Mr. Warren McClendon Jr., we honor you today on our Moments in Black History brought to you by Dublin Ford.
Looks like you got some new vehicles in.
Yeah, but this chip shortage isn't going away anytime soon. Our friends need to know that if they order their vehicle from Dublin Ford Lincoln, the factory puts that order to the front of the line.
I wish someone would solve this chip problem.
We got chips now. Daddy's going to be so proud.
I'm going to need a bigger pantry.
Problem solved.
Dr. Avery and Dr. Chuck Appella are glad to announce the opening of Central Georgia Primary Care right next to Paul's Tire at 230 Industrial Boulevard. At Central Georgia Primary Care, we offer highly skilled physicians with compassionate, personalized care focused on each individual patient as our top priority every single day. Our physicians have devoted a lifetime of excellence in health care. It's Central Georgia Primary Care bringing state-of-the-art health care right here at home.
All right, we will move on to item number seven, which is discussion and action on a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with Transform Dublin Inc.
This is Resolution 2207, a resolution by the mayor and council to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Dublin and Transform Dublin Inc., a nonprofit organization, to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the same to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
All right, we have a, do you want to give us an explanation?
Sure. Transform Dublin, which originally started as the Transformers Program by Chief Chapman, has now formed a 501(c)(3) corp for their nonprofit and they use the house on Prince Street that's actually owned by the city. And just to clarify the terms of the use of that house, staff voted important to enter into an agreement with them to formalize the use of the house and what we expect from them. They do provide a very good service to help troubled youth or people who need help and guidance in anything from how to fill out a job application to steering them towards jobs, giving them interview techniques and going through that process with them, helping them achieve their GED. They actually have, Transform Dublin actually has an agreement with O'Conne Fall Line Ten College to help with that. And so they're providing a very valuable service to the community and so use of this house is a good way that the city could partner with them to achieve that.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Also, as I mentioned in pre-council, today, February 3rd, 2022, is Transform Dublin Day in the city of Dublin. We signed a proclamation this afternoon recognizing the efforts of Transform Dublin for our citizens. We have any questions for Mr. Powell or staff regarding this memorandum of understanding?
Yes, what's the operation, what is over there, the case and all?
For the public, we'll come in. I know that there's someone that gets there early in the morning, like 8:30 or so, but I can get exact times and contact information and we can actually put that out on social media too, so.
Any other questions? If not, then we can have someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
We have, we have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to item number eight, which is discussion and action on a resolution requesting local legislative delegation to support extending historic tax credits.
This is Resolution 2208. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin requesting that local legislative delegation introduce or support legislation to extend the state income tax credit program for rehabilitated historic property currently expiring at the end of 2022 and for other lawful purposes. And just by way of information, the state income tax credit for the rehabilitation of historic properties, as you all know, has been instrumental in the redevelopment of downtown Dublin. All of these old banks that have been restored were due in large part to this tax credit. The law was first enacted in 2002 and is set to expire at the end of this year unless the legislature acts to either extend it or come up with a new legislation to extend it. And so this resolution is just this body's way of showing our local diligence to the Georgia Senate and House Representatives to take action to extend this.
Great. Do we have any?
Just, ma'am, can you go in detail about?
Just maybe you go in detail about uh requirements to be considered historic.
Uh sure, I'd be glad to. The um the historic tax credits are available at the state level and federal level. If you have a historic building, then you can get up to forty five percent of your uh cost of renovation backed in the form of a tax credit. Those tax credits uh can be used by the person doing the renovation and at times they can be sold to investors. So if you've got a uh project like the Henry Building in downtown where you have a million dollars of renovation, you can get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that back in the form of tax credits, which you can then sell to others and it makes these very expensive projects uh possible to do. Without the tax credits, it's really hard to do this type of historic renovation work. The buildings that qualify for it are any buildings that are designated as uh buildings on the National Register of Historic Places, and we've got uh a number of those buildings in town, but even more importantly, any building that is within a national registered district. And Dublin has two national registered districts, which the first and probably the one most people are aware of is the downtown National Registered District. And all of our historic buildings in downtown will qualify for this tax credit, all the historic buildings. But we also have a National Registered District that's along Bellevue that extends uh on both sides, north and south of Bellevue. So if you're in a residential home, you can also qualify for a state and federal tax credit. And of course, the danger that we're facing now as a state um or as a community is that if the state uh allows these tax credits to expire, then this incentive for doing these renovations of historic properties goes away, or at least it gets reduced substantially. And as we still have a lot of buildings downtown and in our neighborhoods that need renovation, this is a very important tool for making this happen. Uh as as Mr. Powell said, our skyscraper, the G M C building was uh was renovated with tax credits, the Henry Building, the corporate building. Um many of the buildings down, most of the buildings downtown have used these tax credits. So this would just uh send a message to the legislature about how important these tax credits are to communities like ours. I hope that answered your question. Uh that and more probably. You get me started on tax credit or historic renovation, I can keep going for a while. Any other questions about this measure? Now, I appreciate Mr. Powell putting it on the agenda. This is something that um that is especially uh meaningful to me, so I I appreciate this coming before the board. Do we have a motion on it?
So move.
Second. We have a motion from um Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Hi, I'm uh Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new uh office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy and uh we're just excited to have it and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin. The city of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today, so for your home, choose the most natural resource. Safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call two seven seven five zero four eight today and let us help you start saving today.
It's nothing personal. It's just business.
Hello?
That's how some people do things.
Right away.
To us, everything we do is personal because anyone can answer the call. It's who shows up that matters most. That's the quality of your independent agent and the company that stands behind them. Ask Curry Maffet Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
We'll move on to item number nine, which is uh discussion action on approval of a supplemental agreement with the D O T for Stubbs Park.
Council entered into the agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the TIA project, that is the Stubbs Park Transportation Project. Um that was back in twenty eighteen. Um and the original uh funding amount through TIA was um three, just over three point five million dollars. Um after the project has been bid now and um council awarded that bid at the first of January, and then our engineering costs have become more um clear and we know exactly what those figures are going to be. Um TIA has come back now and and increased our funding um to four point, just over four point two million dollars, and this agreement will make that effective. So we ask that um council approve the um agreement and um allow this money to be used in Dublin.
All right, do we have any uh questions for staff regarding this matter? If not, we have a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Briggs and a second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to item number ten, which is discussion and action on board appointments. Uh the first item is um an appointment by mayor uh by mayor with council approval to the youth commission. Uh I am, as we've discussed before, I'm recommending that council appoint Ray Bloodworth to the youth commission. Uh Ms. Bloodworth uh is here tonight. Do you mind standing up for a second? Ms. Bloodworth is a native of Chicago. She has spent uh last several months, probably over a year now, attending city council meetings and other local government meetings as a visitor. She's shown great enthusiasm for learning about her community and has expressed a desire to uh to contribute back. Uh she formerly worked with youth at the Eastman R Y D C and has a lot of great ideas and enthusiasm for mentoring our community's youth. We appreciate your willingness to serve and I will be recommending to council uh the appointment of Ray Bloodworth to the youth commission.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
We have a um a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Briggs. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Ms. Bloodworth. Look forward to your service with the community. The next item is a uh recommendation to fill an open slot on the tourism on the Tourism Council. Tourism Council is more commonly known as Visit Dublin. Uh this would actually be a recommendation from council to the Tourism Board for an appointment to to an opening uh on that board. Um as we've discussed before, I'm recommending Tammy Waverick for that position. Tammy has uh been a volunteer for the last two years with the Chamber of Commerce on their ambassadors program. She's attended untold numbers of ribbon cuttings. If any of you've been to a ribbon cutting, you've probably seen her there and she's been helping uh support and promote our local small businesses. She actually has a degree in in hospitality and tourism from the University of South Carolina and she moved to Dublin with her husband back in twenty eighteen and she's already been uh very involved in the community. Uh she is actually the president of the Barney Stone with the uh Dublin Martin St. Patrick's Festival this year. Um I think based on her background and her desire to contribute to the community that she would be a great addition to the Tourism Board. I would recommend her name to the council for a uh recommendation to that board.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion from uh Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Godfrey. Uh any discussion on the motion? Is is Ms. is Ms. Waverick here? I I think she said she wouldn't be able to. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, congratulations to Ms. Waverick and I understand that you had another commitment this evening, but we look forward to your service. I have two appointments uh tonight that are um to the Dublin Housing Authority. Uh first, I'm gonna thank Chester Wilcox and Javanna Brown for their long service uh to the housing authority. They've done a great job and uh they have volunteered countless hours in service of their community and the housing authority and we appreciate all the hard work that they have done over the years. Uh tonight, I am appointing Edwin May and Galen Ellington to these positions. Um is uh Mr. May and Ms. Ellington here? Do you mind standing for a second? Um Mr. May and Ms. Ellington, um I've known Edwin uh since we were in high school and I have a tremendous respect for him and his uh contributions contributions to the city that he's already made. I know that you're gonna be a um uh bring a lot of good ideas and energy uh to the housing authority and appreciate your willingness to serve. Now, Ms. Ellington, I haven't known for as long, but I'm just as impressed. I think that you've got uh the right energy and attitude to um bring to the housing authority and appreciate your willingness to serve and looking forward to seeing great things uh from both of you in the future. I know Ms. Brenda Smith is here tonight and I I'm sure that y'all have an opportunity to talk about the next board meeting and getting up to speed on how y'all can contribute to the community. Appreciate you your willingness to serve. Thank you very much. Are there any other matters before the council? If not, we'll move to citizens' comments. We have any citizens uh who'd like to make comments tonight? Mr. Dixon? Just out of fairness, I do this with everybody. I gotta, we have the the council rules, five minutes per person.
Yes.
Um but you know, that usually ends up being plenty of time, but.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity this evening to come before you. Um you all look great in your green and groin, I hope. So it's exciting time to be uh back in Dublin and being able to invest my time and my energy um in Dublin. Um I was away for just a few number of years and um after retirement uh from one sector of employment, I'm now here working with Healthy Star and Public Health as Fathers Among Men's Project Coordinator. So that's why I'm here today. Normally, I'm here asking for something, but today we're not here asking for anything. We want to come back and talk about how we can partner with the city to help with crime, to help with health, and to help with building healthy families. So as the director of Healthy Star, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Latasha Elbert.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here today. Uh my name is Latasha Elbert and I am the director of Project Healthy Star and the uh project director of Fathers Among Men. Um some of you may not know, but we are a satellite office of uh Department of Public Health. We are uh with the Lawrence County Board of Health. Um our program, Healthy Star, has been around since the nineties. Um and what our program does is we are a infant mortality reduction program and we service um practically all the moms and babies, you know, in the community because we serve the um South Central Health District, which is ten counties, and Lawrence County is one of our counties that we serve. Um we, our job is to just to help reduce maternal mortality. You guys know that is a big thing in the state now. We have so many mothers that die during childbirth and as well as our infants that are dying. So what we're trying to do is just trying to reduce that by providing case management services. We provide um childbirth ed, we provide um prenatal classes. We also provide incentives for them participating in the program like um car seats and um cribs, also diapers and wipes, different things that we provide. But we also um are a community-driven program and so that that's why we're here today to gain support from the city about some of the things that we do. Our Fathers Among Men program is a grant-funded program that we um got the grant in twenty twenty. Um and um there was a need in the community for a Fathers Among Men program because there's nothing, there's not a lot of things geared toward fathers. Most of the grants you get now, um they're dear, you know, maternal child health. That's all we talk about. That's all, you know, that's all you hear. But uh fathers need support too. So I'm gonna allow Clifford to tell us a little, tell you guys a little bit about Fathers Among Men program and then um Mr. Dixon will come back and tell you guys a little bit more about what he does.
Good evening. My name is Clifford Hunter. I'm the fatherhood liaison for Fathers Among Men and I've been working in the community with fathers for a great deal of time. We use a curriculum called Twenty Four Seven Dad where we teach um men the particulars of what it means to be a man. Uh we deal with fatherhood history, how they dealt with their own fathers, and as you know, uh there are right now some statistics, nineteen point nine million kids don't have a father living in the home and that's in America. So we deal with fatherhood history. We deal with co-parenting with mom. We deal with showing and handling feelings. We deal with all kinds of things when it comes to what it means to be a man and it travels or transcends culture. This is about what is known in all cultures. So we deal with that as well. We have about twelve sessions that we teach that they go through from money management to child support and our goal is to help men become better in the lives of their children. Our program is not only known here in Dublin, but our program has gained recognition in many areas. We partner some with uh reaching our sisters everywhere, a group out of Atlanta, Rose, and reaching our brothers everywhere, a group in Atlanta as well. We have been nominated through the National Advisory Committee on Rural Health to be a part of that, to help to make decisions based on rural health. So our program has become known um federally as well, so we are glad to have this program in Dublin. We have many testimonies of men who've been through our program and talk about the good things that they have been able to learn, uh how they've been able to help in relationships, how they've been able to help to spend more time, the importance of spending time with their children. We're hoping today that you will take this into account and stand with us as we prepare to reach more men and change the narrative of men in our communities. I don't know if you know, but in some communities, the narrative of men is that they're no good, that they're not, it's not worth it. But we believe it's worth it to help our men to grow and become what they need to be in fatherhood.
Thank you all for this opportunity to come before you tonight. I don't stand here because I grew up with a silver spoon in my mouth. I was born with a unwed mother by age twenty two, had six children. It was because of people like you that sat in decision-making seats that empowered me to be who I am today. So what I ask of you, if we want the gang activities to go down, if we want crime to go down in Dublin, let's embrace all of these resources that we have and help us to open some doors that we're needing some resistance with. And I think that we can um make a change here in Dublin, Georgia, because we believe in Dublin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's inspiring to hear. Any council comments or questions?
I'm just I'm just gonna ask, I I thought of two things while you were speaking. Is is the um Fathers Among Men, is it a, is it a program that people could be, like you have to go through so many meetings to complete it or is it just come as they need it? How does that work?
We go, we give you case management and we do, you do go through our twelve sessions that we do here.
Well, I I'm thinking about um that before I got this appointment, I was prosecutor in municipal court and so many times I would see people who would come in with suspended driver's licenses because of unpaid tax form. So um I see a, I see a link there where you know, have those cases, you know, those people referred over to get help um and you know, deal with their cases in that way because nobody benefits from them not being able to drive to work, but then being able to pay, you know, their tax form. Um and the other thing is the Transform Dublin program that we were talking about earlier, there's. I I've seen that there's been a lot of times where there you have, everybody has these little programs they do, but none of them, there's not a connection. So if we can try to.
We're trying to use it as a vehicle to merge some of these programs together and we we participate with every collaborative that there is in Dublin that um we're invited to um sit at the table with. So um bet, we're better together and that is one of the main ideas that we we're thinking in terms of trying to get into the judicial system to say, hey, if you got some that's not really um things that we can help you with, we can make them accountable. We can document and we can provide you back with a report that they did attend and they were participants in the end program.
Right, and um also in your bags, you should have our brochures and our cards and stuff through there. And so it'll tell you a little bit more about the program, um because we can sit up here and we can talk forever about everything that we're doing. But I do want to say that the age range for um guys to participate in the fatherhood program is eighteen and up and they have to have children from zero to twenty four years of age. So um that's open for adult, men with adult children too. So um it's a good program. They don't have to be fathers. They can just be father figures. Um if they have some kind of impression in a child's life and there is an incentive for participant paid in the program, each guy can receive up to is three hundred and fifty dollars for participating. So um it is a easy process.
Yeah, I I think that um you might find the municipal court sort of a easier avenue to get to some of these these guys because sometimes you go to Superior Court and you know, you get all types of cases and levels of cases. But municipal court's a sort of early intervention stage where you have the, you know, the misdemeanor and and we've got some local people here that would, I'm sure, love to partner with you on that.
And we also have a younger program that serves through our Healthy Star side, um so we're not leaving out our younger um fathers at an early age, so we can serve them as well.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Glenn, registered with Hometown Supply. Hometown Supply located in downtown Dublin is here for all of your home and hardware needs. We work with customers. I know sometimes times get tough. We. We work with you through those. Local delivery is available for merchandise sold. Anything that a customer needs, we take care of. Just remember, you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do business.
I'm Brian Bazemore, president and CEO of Community Bank of Dublin Lawrence County. We would like to invite you to come by and experience a welcoming banking environment. Come by today and have a cup of coffee and let us talk with you about our many products. Savings accounts, checking accounts, CDs, and our many loans. You're more than just a number to us, you're family. Come by today, Community Bank of Dublin Lawrence County, member FDIC and equal housing lender.
Whether you're a Braves fan or a Dogs fan, it feels good to be a winner. I'm Don Carswell and you'll have fun with a winning deal from Dublin Chevy Nissan. Come and see our championship selection of new and pre-owned trucks here at Dublin Chevy Nissan. Titan or Frontier, it's your choice. Sierra or Silverado, you're the winner. For the W, all you have to do is call, click, or come in. And remember, Don sells cars well only at Dublin Chevy Nissan.
Any other citizens' comments?
Good afternoon. I just wanted to embrace the city council. I was on ancestry.com and I was doing some research on my family history. And it has some pictures of graves. And it said it's Cross Creek Cemetery. I never heard that in my life. And so I asked around and I went there. And to say that I was truly impressed would be an understatement. I saw that the city took on that project, single-handedly with the direction of Ms. Drury. Looks like she was the spearhead of that. Well, she's the spearhead of most things, but I just want to commend the city for the work that you did out there. It is a very sacred feeling peaceful place out there. If you all hadn't had a chance to go out there, I just recommend that you go out there and look. And wherever the city's been out there, I just want to tell you that your money was well spent and it is doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think appreciation goes to the former council members that are still here to work hard on that project over a period of years. I think we've got one more citizen comment at least.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, other citizens. My name is Marilyn Stoff. My family and I live on Tucker Street, just around the corner here in downtown Dublin, from Stoss Park, popular area these days. I noticed recently the addition of several pine trees there. And I would just like to respect the low press that you consider the addition of fruit trees when you're planning for future development there. They're beautiful, they have fragrant blossoms, they attract beneficial pollinators, and they also provide fresh produce. And with it being very near to a low-income housing area there, it could benefit those families as well as others in the community. And that kind of gets rid of your harvesting, harvesting issues that you hear about when these are present in some cities. Even starting with just two apple trees would be advantageous. It would also provide an educational opportunity for children, especially those involved in coordination and helping your little friend. Thank you for your time.
Well, you don't know how timely this is, because one of the appointments that we still have to do is to the tree board. And we've been looking for someone who's interested in.
You know, I always line up stairs.
If you don't mind just staying after the meeting for a minute, I'll get your.
Yeah, my brother was in the navy and they told him to never volunteer for it. But somehow we always managed to get thrown into something or other.
Well, you've got, that's a great idea about the fruit trees and I hope that you'll be able to serve on the tree board as well. And I haven't mentioned this to council, but we've got a goal planning session coming up in February. And one of the items that I hope to put on it is an initiative to plant 1,000 trees in Dublin over the next two years. I hope that we can allocate the funding for it and get the manpower to do it. You know, planting a tree is one of the best investments that we can make in the future. So that is something that we'll be discussing in February and we can see your participation on the tree board. All right, do we have any other citizen comments? If there are no other citizens' comments, we'll move to staff comments. Mr. Danes? Mr. Bradshaw? Mr. King? Ms. Brown? Ms. Powell? All right, Ms. Mascherano?
I just want to say thanks to everyone that came out. Good to see every council meeting. I just wanted to say thank you. Trey, Harstcoats, Matt, he's a professional, he's doing a good job with the water park. It was a great presentation into Elgin. It's good to know that we have guys like you fighting the good fight for our community. It's an important thing on all our hearts. I think a lot of us know that it's a place that we need to put some resources and time. And it's good to hear that there's movement behind that. So it's all really happy, just appreciate all you all coming out and supporting your city.
All right, thank you. Councilman Smith?
I just want to say thanks to those who came out tonight. Also, I just want to thank Blake, man, this is a nice-sized pack, man. Thank you, Blake, for this hard work. Also, commend the program you guys, this is an awesome program. I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback, because that's something we really need in Dublin. So I really need you guys on that. I also want to make mention to Dublin Boys and Girls Basketball Team. The boys are ranking number one right now in the region, the girls are ranking number three. And they, they went smarter than we ranked them too. So if you get time, make sure you guys come out to support the basketball program. Pretty much all I got.
I forgot, I haven't had one.
Go ahead.
On May 5th, I know the same Patracheet Committee is looking for mentors to go and do the munchies and music in Stubbs.
Mark, sorry, Mark's there, excuse me.
And I don't think it's been widely broadcast, so I think they're looking for people that are able to be validated and have the ability to do the event. I think it should be a pretty awesome turnout in downtown. So if you hear me calling, I'm not part of it, I'm just helping them, I'm doing part of it. So if you hear me calling, some of you want to come out there and set up, they need your help.
Thank you for that. Councilman Briggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming. Echo pretty much what everybody has said so far. And stay safe and have a good week.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to echo what was called before. They kind of noted that presented, all those areas are, should be here for all of our hearts. And so look forward to the collaboration, see what we can do to make a difference in our community. We'll thank Mr. Chapman for his work in providing us the service that Mr. Colley does. Thank Blake for working in collaboration with, he and staff working in collaboration with Mr. Colley. Also, congratulations to those who have been appointed to various boards and look forward to your service.
And thank you, Councilman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything in the city, go in the city, thank you all for coming out. The presentations, everyone, the water park, Mr. Coats, Mrs. JJ, Mr. Carter for yours, Blake doing one of the jobs. We all know we're keeping us on track with the budget and then there's no, when you do so, it gives us understanding. So thank you for that and all the staff do. Everyone that has been appointed and decided they want to volunteer to be on boards, thank you for doing that. I've actually attended some of the meetings that Reverend Hunter's had. And we have, and it's a great program. It is to sit down and get to see some of the fathers there, to sit there and the emotions they get out of. But that is a great program. COVID kind of slowed it down, going a little quicker. So you get to go, you have to go get to see guys there. So that's a great partnership that you can hopefully partner with you. And everyone be safe. And remember, this is Black History Month, so you know, learn some history. You know, it's, someone mentioned like Cross Creek, said, Mr. May, that is part of the Black History. So if you don't know where the park at, where it's at, Cross Creek Cemetery is, go down across Parkerberry Road. The crossroads, you get to the water plant, it's right, road that go right there between the water plant and Reverend Bond's house. You see the cemetery graves from way, way, way back into my 1800s. So go back there, visit, you may have some relatives, you from Dublin, you can look for the season, you may have some relatives that's back there in the cemetery. So please go visit, it's very peaceful, very, very well-kept also.
And I'm sorry, they do have a log with the names of the people.
But thank you, Councilman. Councilman Godfrey?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. First of all, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Sonja, Mrs. Sonja Mae Calvin. She is the young lady who is responsible, rich, for being the gentleman on the spot with the transformer house and getting the kids their GED. So she's right there with the way to hand, Sonja. He wants to know who that was, Ms. Sonja. So, and thank everybody who have accepted the board appointments. And we are so glad you're serving on the boards. Curtis Coats, thank you for all you do for the water park. You do such an awesome job. And I'm proud of the fatherhood program. I want to see more fathers be at YO and stop it all. So thank you everybody for coming out. Thank you, Mr. Julius King, for being here for us. And you all have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Colley?
I'm just excited to see everyone stepping up and doing their part. And I think that's what a community is about. We all have a part to play and whether it's the water park or local business or serving on the committee. It's just exciting to see everyone pitching in, because that's what it's going to take. I'm especially proud of the Fathers Among Men program, because the statistics don't lie that every child needs a father in their life. And so I'm really excited about the work that you're going to do with that and how that's going to impact our community. Because that's where it all starts. It doesn't start up here, it starts at home and in our families. So I'm very thankful for that. Thank you, Blake, for being so transparent and helping along with this process. And we're just so thankful to know we have the money when we need the money and where it's going to be spent. And so that you also know as citizens where that's going. I do want to mention the My Dublin 311 app. I don't think that it's been well advertised, but there's an incredible resource that every citizen in our city has. Simple app that you download on your phone, it's called My Dublin 311. And if you have a request or an issue in your neighborhood, whether that's police, fire, sanitation, stray dog, whatever that is, you have the ability right there on your phone to locate that. Take a picture of it, attach it to your request, and it keeps a documented, a document of your request right there on your phone, 24/7. So I would really encourage all of you to share that word around. I know some of you get confused about who do I talk to or what, who do I need to contact for X, Y, Z? It has it all right there on that app. So I hope that that'll be a useful tool for you.
Please download it so all the public works and all the departments won't think it's just me. You're sending from dogs to picking up mattress, so please just do it for me.
Thank you for those comments from all of council. Whenever, whenever I was elected mayor, I don't necessarily know what all I got into. It's been a lot of work and it's been a lot of work for council too. And I know that you guys have really stepped up. You are spending a lot of time on this. I appreciate what y'all have put into it. And I know that we're keeping staff busy too. And I appreciate that all you are doing to stay on top of the constant stream of ideas that we keep throwing at you. Y'all have done a great job. And I just wanted the public to know that council will be going to a goal session in the next couple of weeks. We're going to spend a couple of days sitting around talking and getting all these ideas out on the table and prioritizing them and finding where the money is. And when we come out of that goal session, we'll have a united vision for the future of Dublin and a path for achieving that vision. And hopefully the money to take us down that path. And it's because of the teamwork. And I think that this council has a great sense of teamwork and camaraderie. And I think that staff has been very responsive and I feel like there are great things ahead of us as a community. With no other comments, city councils now adjourn.